Four o'clock today. Let's take a quick roll because Mr. Pfeifer has indicated that he will not be here. Okay, Mr. Marriott.
Here.
Well, no.
Let's do the roll and then...
Yeah.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Marriott?
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember McGough?
Here.
Councilmember Miller?
Here.
We've got Mr. Marriott, motion?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to excuse Mr. Pfeifer from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Mr. Pfeifer being absent. Okay. I see Mr. Archer standing, ready to go. Do you wish to introduce him and get this started?
Yes, so a couple of brief comments, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a follow-up from actually two sources of direction that you council provided staff. One was the City Council Strategic Planning Retreat back in January wherein you asked us to look at debt reauthorization and also a number of projects. We presented you with information on debt reauthorization regarding kind of a comparison between cash funding the projects and also issuing debt. And from there, you asked us to provide you with some additional information on reissuing debt and a list of capital projects. So we have a list of capital projects that have been included in the presentation that you will get from the Director of Finance, Brian Archer, who'll lead this discussion. Some of the information will review some of the issues regarding the reauthorization of debt. And then we have a number of capital projects that we are at least recommending for discussion. This is by no means necessarily the only recommendation. In fact, really, the object of this presentation is to really receive input from the City Council on the projects that you would like us to perform some more due diligence on and potentially include in the, in a debt authorization election. And then the City Attorney, Chris Daly, has drafted some debt authorization language that we actually sent out to you on Friday, which of course, we're happy to discuss that as well. We've allotted 90 minutes, or approximately 90 minutes, for this discussion because we expected to receive a rather robust reaction from all of you on these projects. I mean, these are really the kinds of projects that you would, you know, accomplish. You know, this authorization, this debt authorization would be repaid in 20 years, similar to what happened with the last, the last debt that we issued. So this is a really important discussion, kind of generational projects that we're presenting for you tonight. And we're certainly open to receiving your input. And then after Mr. Archer makes his presentation, I'll have a few concluding comments before proceeding. Brian?
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Devon. Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to come talk about the possibility of a sales and use tax bond reauthorization. And as Mr. Devon led in, we'll just get started. So I'd like to reset some of the assumptions. We've talked about these. This is a look at a reauthorization. Our last sales tax issuance was in 1998. We will pay that off this December. There'll be approximately $4.5 million available that we can use. At one time, we had discussed a $5 million number with City Council. What we did is we used 500,000 of that to go ahead and issue COPs to do 72nd and Indiana. So that is why we're now talking about $4.5 million. This is not new money. This is money that we are receiving today. We are not asking for a sales tax increase. I will make reference to this as 98-101 funds. You may have heard this in the past. And this is the code section that identifies that we have to spend 60% of our first cent of sales tax on capital or debt related to capital. When you take the numbers, that basically comes out to 20% of our sales tax spent each year on debt or capital. We have three main options. We can issue debt for the entire amount, either through a bond, which would require a vote, or some level of COP. We can issue the debt for part of the amount and cash finance some projects, or we can cash finance the entire set of projects. We have discussed this concept, and I will show some numbers to help reiterate that conversation. But again, we must spend this money. We cannot save it. Council may remember this information. You received this on April 9th. This relates to what we can borrow at the various interest rates. This was done by our outside financial advisor, Stiefel. So the numbers that we're dealing with are somewhere between 62 and 65 million. We feel comfortable that 63 million is probably a good number. To take this out a little bit further, you will see what we would generate in principal interest and what our total payback would be. One question would be, why is the total payback the same? The reason is, and what I did in this, is we would be getting paid a premium for our debt in the market. Because of our AAA rating, that premium is additive to the principal and makes what we can use and what we can spend greater. Actually, we would be borrowing approximately $56 million in this scenario. That's a little confusing, so if you have any questions, let me know. We also spoke on April 9th about the average costs of inflation on a national level. This is just a reset for that. What you see at the bottom is medium household. We thought this would be important to include, and that's change in medium household income nationwide. So you can see inflation is actually growing faster than income has and wages have, both on a national level. And then again, this is the state of Colorado. For Colorado, we put it just for the last five years, since we've had an acceleration. It did want to reflect that we're in a growth market. So on to the projects that staff has worked up as presentation for tonight. We have two sets of projects, a group of what we would call Tier One recommendations and a group of Tier Two recommendations. Certainly would like to walk specifically through the Tier Ones, and then when we get to the Tier Twos, if there's any specific questions, we have a group of people in the audience that can help answer. Also on the Tier Ones, if something does not make sense or you would like further clarification, please let me know, and we'll get the appropriate person to answer that question. First one is Ralston Road, approximately 15 million. If you remember, we did have a higher price tag on this one the last time. It was about 16 and 1/2 million. The reason this number is a little bit lower is some of the overall project has been completed. We did receive a grant for what would be on the most eastern side of the project. We have had some work done down in the Ralston Fields, Ralston Triangle area, on the most western side of the project, but we're still missing the individual pieces in the middle. While these segments don't line up directly to what we have accomplished, they do give a sense of what would be left. And again, this goes to straightening and widening the project. We do feel comfortable that we could accomplish this project in three years, but it will require some outside help. The reason we use this term "three years" is when you borrow money, you are required to spend that money within three years. If you do not, then you have to file and possibly be subject to arbitrage. And what arbitrage is, is basically a calculation that takes what you earned on the money from an interest perspective and compare it to what you're paying from a debt perspective. If there's a difference in that, then you have to pay a penalty.
Mr. Marriott?
Brian, I had a further question about that. Do these projects have to be planned, contracted for, completed and paid in three years or just under contract in three years?
No, planned, contracted...
Got to be done.
...irt moved and...
In three years.
Yeah, that's the goal. If not, then you have to go on with these calculations.
Right. And if you do fall under those arbitrage rules, how big of a penalty is that? You know, if you're six months late, what does that look like?
Really, the calculation there depends on your rate of return and what you're paying from an interest rate environment. And so it's possible that could happen with, if we locked in interest rates, let's say in 2018...
And interest rates go up.
...and the feds continue to raise them, it's possible we could bump into that.
Right.
Without it, usually it's just more of a pain, a financial pain, and we have to calculate it all and then we're usually okay.
Right. So is the overall idea is that you can't, a municipality anyway, can't borrow money at one rate and then just go and invest it at a higher rate?
That's it.
Okay.
That's the best way to describe it.
Okay. Thank you.
And Mr. Archer, wasn't the road, I'm sorry, the Ralston Road extension or the widening, like the number one priority of the CIP committee?
It has been the number one priority with both Citizen CIP committees.
Yeah.
And would fall as a number one priority from staff as well.
Okay, very good.
The next project would be the Ward Road extension. And this project would be taking it from four lanes from where its current termination on 72nd Avenue and bringing it across and behind Double E and Cameo Estates, thank you, and making it match up with Alchire. And this four lanes would then stop at 86th Avenue. It would not continue, excuse me, stop at 80th Avenue. It would not continue from 80th on into 86th Avenue, which would require something to do with the railroad. So this would be basically from 72nd to 80th. Estimated cost of 20 million, timeline three years. Again, this would require outside help to make sure we get everything we need in place. There is right-of-way acquisition on this project. Also tied into this are some various trail projects that would, we would hope to accomplish in working with the expansion. The next project on the list is the top six trail gaps. So these were identified by the Citizen CIP committee as well. Parks and their staff has worked on these as the highest priorities. Cost of approximately 3.6 million, timeline two years. We do feel like we could accomplish the majority of this in-house from a design perspective, but certainly would need some outside help on areas where they get a little bit sticky. As you can see, these projects are listed in order and would help close trail gaps on various parts throughout the city. The next Tier One project to discuss would be the completion of the Lake Arbor project. There's actually four items that would need to be completed out there. What you see right now are the top two. Number one project being the work done on the irrigation. The number two would be the update and completion of the playground. Those two projects combined add to the approximately 3.3 million, should take approximately two years to complete. Design work has been completed that would need to be updated. There are two more items in this area that could be considered. One would be updates to the lake itself. Right now, stormwater is looking at finding ways to be able to pay for that. And then the final item would be implementing the proposal at the Pomona parcel that related to adding in a footpath and updating some of the items there. Neither one of those are on this list, but they would complete the entire master plan at Lake Arbor. The next item is related to the George Myers Pool. Approximately seven years ago, seven years ago? Seven years ago, the pool itself broke and was shut down for approximately two and a half months. At that time, engineers came in and were able to get the pool up and running, but put a seven to 10-year timeline on the life of the pool. We've done many upgrades since then to try to keep it working, finding out that also the roof of the pool is in trouble. The proposal that you see today would be the cost of completely redoing the pool, adding in three tanks. We are a little concerned about the timeline here. Also a little concerned about location. Certainly, a larger pool would put some pressure on where the current location is. It would require some outside help to getting this project designed and put in. There are partners on this project, and we can discuss more as we move on. Final item on the Tier One list is the stinger improvements. This would be the paving and completion of irrigation work, not irrigation work, drainage work, out at the stinger projects. This is a, as shovel-ready of a project as we have. All the design work is complete. We would just need to pull permits and pave. Approximate cost, 2.4 million. Overall, these projects add up to about 69 million, so a little bit more than what we've identified, but we'll talk about how we think we can offset that. One of the things that came out of both our January retreat and April was the question around cash and if we cash financed the projects. So we went ahead and did a quick calculation, assuming normal interest rates and assuming a period of time running in the order that the projects were presented. This little infographic will show that we would accomplish the projects. It would take a little bit longer, obviously, than 20 years, and a little bit more money. So this would answer the question, should we cash finance or bond? And from a purely financial perspective, getting the money today would be, if you want to use these numbers, approximately $21 million more beneficial, not great language there, than if we cash financed. The next set of projects is what we would call our Tier Two projects. Each one of these had a very high mark from staff and from the Citizen CIP committee. Also could be considered and exchanged for any of the projects that you saw in the Tier One. First, 72nd Avenue widening, and I put no railroad here. I do want to caution on both the 72nd Avenue projects. These are numbers from many years ago. We do know that the cost for a lot of this is escalating very quickly. And so the 12 million for widening would basically be from Oak heading west and approving those roads at an estimated cost of 12 million. We did include the 86th and Indiana Railroad undercrossing, underpass. If you remember, earlier this year, we applied for a Tiger grant, did not receive that grant, but this was the estimated cost to widening that underpass at the railroad on Indiana. The next, you will see an item of 18 million, which would be from Oak Street to Kipling Street and putting in the underpass for the railroad. I am certain that that number is not good, but it is a starting point that we can talk about. We are going to need more money if that is a decision that City Council would want to do. The next is extending Ward Road from 80th to 86th. So if you remember on the Ward Road conversation, we were going to stop at 80th. If we wanted to continue, and basically it becomes Alchire Street at that point, if we want to take Alchire from 80th all the way up and make it meet on 86th and either go under or over, is it under? I think it's under. Go under the railroad there, it would cost an estimated 21 million. The next item you will see on the list is related to the Northwest Service Facility. As our Public Works and Parks has identified our continued growth out west, that they are going to need a satellite facility to be able to offer the services that they offer today. This is an estimate for that number. We are continually developing what all we're going to need and working on property, but we feel very comfortable out of $15 million number would accomplish what we need. The next item you will see is Sim Street. So many of you remember the Citizen CIP committee, they had ranked this as one of their higher priorities. The concerns we have with Sim Street now is looking at capacity improvements. This would not increase our capacity. What it would do is increase our mobility. We would definitely gain bike lanes and the ability to get up and down Sims, but it would not improve the number of cars that can go up and down Sims. That's why I moved from a Tier One to a Tier Two priority from staff. And then finally, I had mentioned earlier, the Pomona parcel, Phase Four of the Lake Arbor master plan. This is the cost related to that. So many of you are probably asking, what happened to our Parks and Fleet building? One of the Tier One items identified also by our Citizen CIP committee.
Just a little side chatter.
Okay, all right. So what you will see is a drastically different building and a drastically different number than what was presented before. The number that was presented before was a building that was a concrete building. It was also to improve the streets and to add a salt building and to add storage, coverage storage for much of our equipment. Right now, we are looking at a way to try to accomplish this, redo the Parks and Fleets building at the minimum amount. So what you will see is this 8.7 million, $8.7 million would be a steel structure built just north of the current building. It would have the ability to grow in the future, but a lot of this has not, this would not include the complete build-out of the building. This would get the building, get the structure up there, but again, it's not going to be LEED certified, it's not going to be a concrete building. This is truly a minimum look at this building. Staff has been working very hard to try to get this off of the list, to allow other items to grow, to become more important. We would caution, again, that this doesn't do anything else on the site. So from the master plan before to this, that is why you see such a large change. The benefits to this is it could be built exactly where it sits now, excuse me, just north of where it sits now. We would not have to take the current building down. We would not be messing around with the hill, and this could be built while we're continually doing work. Approximately a two-year timeframe and no additional staff. So that's a quick reset and a quick run through the projects. So what have we missed and what do we need to talk about?
Okay, Nancy, you're first.
So on the Parks and Fleet building, if we went back to the original design concept, do we know how long that would take and what would that entail in terms of taking employees out of that building and...
So there's a few items on the original concept that wouldn't be in play today. The original concept included building into the hill, obtaining the property that's due north of what you see on that blue line. That property is currently not available for sale, and so that's one of the reasons. Number two, it also included an additional salt building, which we have added since that period of time, so the need for the salt is not as great. And finally, it would include an upgrade, the original included an upgrade to the streets building, adding for growth in the 2025 plan. So that would be adding an additional streets crew, which is an additional six team members. It also would allow the streets crews to be where they appropriately are today. They don't get to meet inappropriate crews. Is that right? Is that the right way to say that? They don't meet inappropriate crews. So that would enable all of that to happen. So you're basically giving all of that up to do this proposal. Does that help answer your question?
And what was the price tag on that original, if you recall?
16, almost 17 million.
Okay. Nancy?
Not at the moment.
Okay. Dot Miller, you're next.
Thank you. So I have a couple of questions about any thoughts on what the 72nd Avenue under the railroad would be? You said this, you just know that number's not right, but I know you know numbers and I know you have a number in mind.
If I had to guess, I would say double that number.
Okay. Now, I have another question that might be for Mr. Devon, is that on the Myers Pool, when we spoke with the school, they said, we would love very much, Jeffco, we would love very much to be able to help, and we're going to put a bond on the ballot bond question or something. And my question was, what if that doesn't pass? And they said, well, we're going to have to come up with something. But in this scenario, we're paying for the entire pool. So I'm just wondering, can we make that contingent on them putting some money in? Can we make that, and maybe Brian would know that answer too, can we make our debt contingent on their availability to pay for it?
So Councilmember Miller, I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you suggesting that we, you know, revisit the number based on their ability to pay or...
Yeah, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't build the pool unless they were going to contribute their amount.
Well, certainly, we can do whatever the council would like to do. I think that's one of the reasons why I'm suggesting we have a joint meeting with the school board that we've tentatively looked at for the last week in June. The 24 million is the number we received from the North Jeffco Swim Team after they had had a discussion with USA Swimming. I think we'd want to independently verify that number to be sure that it's the right number. Right now, the school district is looking at including $10 million in their, in their mill and bond levy, projected mill and bond levy amount. And if that did not pass, they've indicated an interest in helping to fund the pool. I think we'd need to work with them on what that amount would be, which again, is another reason for the joint meeting that we're suggesting for the end of June. They've indicated that they realize that their high schools utilize that pool and that they would want to contribute to the funding for that. Does that answer your question?
It sure does. What I, what I would love to know is whether or not, is it possible that we're going to end up paying the full 24 million, whatever the number is, say it's 24 million, if they can't come up with the funds?
I think that's a possibility, yes.
So, Mr. Devon, do you mind if I, if I jump in here? So just so that the council's aware, look, if we put a ballot question on, a debt question, and says, we're going to spend the money on this, and we're going to spend it within this timeframe, we got to do that. All right? So there's no contingency on that at all. I suppose one of the, one of the arguments is, as Brian explained, there's a couple different ways to look at this. There's $4.5 million and, instead of doing that over time, you know, this is, this is another option or an alternative that we'll just wrap it all together and we'll do those. But, but make no mistake about it, we can't, we can't make that contingent on some other agreement. We're telling the voters, you know, if you vote for this, we're going to, we're going to spend it on this, so we'll be bound to do that. We have to spend it on it. If we ask the voters and they approve, that's what we have to do.
Great, that was my question.
I guess my thought on that, Chris, is if, if indeed, we built that contingency into the question, the ballot question, we could probably do that, but it would probably be pretty darn confusing.
Yeah, I think, I just think people are going to look, I mean, those that will maybe want the, want the facility, you know, might vote for it, others might want something else on there, and this, this whole contingency, I think it's just better just to go straightforward and say, this is what we're going to get the money for and this is what we're going to spend it for.
Okay. Anything else, Dot?
No, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to say that I'd love to see more of the 72nd under the railroad and the 86th on Indiana improvement over trails, don't hate me, over, over trail continuation and paving stinger and things like that. I think we have an incredible traffic issue and I would just, that's my preference.
Yo, I'm going to report in on what Mr. Pfeifer told me by text message. Says, for the capital, I would like to have seen something with roads capacity versus Lake Arbor and trails gaps in light of our congestion issues, but he's going to defer to our expertise in making a recommendation. Of course, this is a workshop, so we're not going to make any final decisions tonight. Mr. Marriott?
So I want to make a couple of comments about each one of these things and let you know kind of what I think about them. I think the Ralston Road thing is a no-brainer, given that a couple of CIP groups have picked that out as their number one priority. The Ward Road extension, though, is a whole different ballgame. Two reasons, a couple of things. One is, I think it has potential to be extremely controversial in and around there, and in fact, may lead to dramatic opposition to a, to a bonding measure, which, given the current climate, I don't, I don't know that we want to have a lot of opposition here. So I worry about that. The second thing is, is I think that the, all the way from 64th North on Ward Road is one lane each way, and making that into two lanes each way is a big, is a big deal to the people who live there. As well as then, as you get north of the Moore Brothers Farm into those next neighborhoods, I think that's politically a very big deal to those folks. And I know when we last looked at our capital plan, we elected to not have that up in our top numbers just because of that. And the third thing is, to me, it appears to have limited ability to move traffic very well because it doesn't connect through the railroad, across the railroad. Now, if we're talking about a project that, that then makes Alchire go underneath or over, however it does it, over the railroad and continue on north of the railroad, then it's a whole different thing. Then it easily, then it could move regional traffic, and its value for moving traffic tends to go up, but the cost also goes up to, you know, in the $40 million range somewhere.
And the opposition goes up for the additional traffic.
And the opposition probably goes up, and, and at that point, I have to start, look, I would... I would start looking at, in that part of town, north-south relieving congestion, are we, and we're going to spend forty million dollars, are we better to just do Indiana ourself? And what's the price tag for doing that? And of course, I don't know, but, but to me, those would be kind of very competing, kind of competing priorities. I think I would lean towards, towards doing Indiana, even though that's not on this list. So I, I have a big, big, big trouble, big trouble with that. Understand the trail gaps in the Lake Arbor Park and, and, and that kind of stuff kind of spreads the effect of this around town, and probably is a good thing to spread it around. It's not a huge amount of money. Although, like Dot, I feel like if we're going to ask residents to borrow money, we need to be spending it on things that make a difference in their daily lives. And I think parks, maintenance buildings don't make any difference in their daily lives. Now, well-maintained parks do. And, and if we have facilities that prevent us from maintaining parks, we have a problem and we need to deal with that. But I think to ask folks to, you know, spend out twenty years in the future, we need to make sure we're doing stuff that they notice a difference right away. And, and, and so to me, that leads me, like Dot, to lean towards kind of road improvement projects. The Myers Pool one is a really hard one, because to me, that's a, I think that's one of the gems and jewels of Arvada, but I think it's also ripe for partnership between the three entities, us, the school district, and Apex, in whatever form. And I don't know how far along we are with really being able to do that. And I'm certain the other two partners in that would be likely to, if we were to, you know, pass a bond to borrow money to do it all, they would quickly tap out and say, thank you very much, and, and move on. And, and I don't know that we've had a robust enough discussion on that yet about whether it becomes rebuilt at its site or moves to some other site, what happens to the site it's at. I mean, there, there's a whole lot of stuff around, around that. Leads me to favoring things like 72nd without the railroad or with the railroad, but, but, but I think that's a, a road segment that impacts people every single day. And so, you know, I think, I think that helps. I understand that Sims doesn't change the capacity, so maybe that makes it down a little bit, but there were a couple of, couple of things that, that weren't on this list that I wonder about, like, I think of 80th from Kipling to Alchire, which is two lanes each way, and I guess I realize a, a little bit of that's in the county and not necessarily all in the city of Arvada. I think, although mostly, I believe it's in the city of Arvada, that, that's another potential project that changes people's everyday lives, the ones who, who go there and changes traffic flow, makes an immediate impact on, on their biggest thing. So, you know, I don't know where that project could possibly fall. Then, of course, I brought it up before, you know, do we, do we bite the bullet and just take on Indiana? And I don't know the ramifications for what that costs and what doing that would be. But again, I, I would come back to, I would lean very hard against the Ward Road extension, thinking that, that, that that could cause us some problems, potentially fatal problems, without much benefit, unless we really spend almost all of it on making that connection past the railroad tracks, and all of a sudden, that changes things quite a bit. So I'd lean against that. I, I think we have more work to develop what happens at Myers Pool, so I don't know how that can fit in, but I, but my approach would be to really lean hard towards traffic improvement projects that impact people's daily lives.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask Mayor Tim Marriott a question?
Sure.
The, when you talk about Indiana, what, what is your vision for Indiana?
Well, you know, my, there's, of course, a number of segments along Indiana where development has happened, and it's been widened out to a footprint that would, that would include two lanes each way. I think that, I think that's kind of my vision for what ultimately Indiana may be would be, you know, two lanes each way, at least, at least Highway 72, you know, Highway 72 to 64th, and, you know, kind of fill it, fill in all those gaps. And I realize that's a huge project, and it's a state highway and maybe not our responsibility anyway, but if you look at forty-plus million dollars for extending Ward Road, which helps traffic move kind of in that same area, is that better than just spending forty-plus million dollars on making traffic move better on Indiana?
The caution that I would urge on, on that is that, in order for us to include that as a project, we would need to engineer it and design it and complete it within three years. And that would virtually be an impossibility for Indiana, and, and, and there's a lot of reasons for that, including right-of-way acquisition and working with, with, with CDOT and, and, you know, other factors along those lines, which would severely complicate that project to the point that it would, there's no way in the world we can complete it within that three-year timeframe.
And I understand that. You know, it, it kind of becomes a quandary of, of where are we most constrained? Is it moving east-west or is it moving north-south? And, you know, our opportunities to improve our traffic flow north-south are a little fewer than, than, than our opportunities for improving traffic flow east-west.
Well, obviously, if, once we get the Beltway completed, some of our north-south...
Some of that, some of that'll help, and...
And Mr. Jones is going to get that done.
Yeah, that's, thank you, Mr. Jones, I appreciate that. But anyway, the, those are, those are just kind of some of my thoughts.
Great. Mr. Jones, you're next.
Thank you. So have you ever felt like you've got an echo in your head, and when someone's speaking, it's like, wow? So John basically said everything that I was going to say, so...
I'm not sure which one was the puppet and which one was the puppet master.
Man, but I, I, I will say just a couple of things. I agree that the, the Ralston Road improvements is kind of a no-brainer, for all of the reasons that Mr. Marriott expressed on Ward Road, I, I feel the exact same. So I'll just add one other, you know, tidbit as it relates to kind of the northwest and maybe an argument as to why we would consider a northwest facility. So, you know, again, I hear, you know, I hear what Mr. Marriott says about spending money on, on roads, and, and I agree a hundred percent, and if we could get Indiana done, that, that would, that would be my first preference. But I also hear, Mr. Devon, what you say. The likelihood of that happening in three years is not going to happen. So, but I would advocate for that northwest facility so that we can have physical assets located up in the northwest for snow removal and so on and so forth. I think that that will benefit that side of town greatly. And so, again, I, I think that, you know, that would be something that would be way higher on my list as opposed to the Ward Road extension, for all the reasons Mr. Marriott talked. I, I would also advocate that, you know, from Alchire to Kipling on 80th would be, again, another project, again, echoing what Mr. Marriott said. I think we have the same constraints there as it relates to getting that done in a three-year period of time. So, you know, of those that are on the list of the other options, the 72nd widening with or without the railroad, the 86th and Indiana crossing, and the Northwest Service Facility are way higher on my list than Ward Road. The others, the Lake Arbor, the trail widening, or the trail gaps and things, those are, those are nice-to-haves. I don't know that they're need-to-haves. These other transportation issues are way more important.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you.
Let's see what the trails advocate has to say.
Oh, and I, I'm in, in agreement with that, as one who spends a lot of time on the trails, I think it's still in that nice-to-have category rather than essential. And I agree with those who've stated ahead of me that the, that transportation, vehicle transportation ought to be the highest priority on here. I would ask Mr. Devon, if you might, or Mr. Mannwaring, tell us, Ward Road extension, what, overall, what's the beneficial impact in terms of what traffic or capacity problem that would, that would solve for us? What, what relief would we get from Ward Road extension?
What we'd envision happening is you'll draw some of that traffic off of Sims. Right now, Sims is pretty saturated, and we've got a lot of backup on Sims. If we could draw some of that traffic off of there and send it down Ward Road where there's a direct connection to I-70, that's where we see the most benefit. People coming from the west, from Leiden Rock, Leiden Ranch, and Spring Valley, that could then access that Ward Road connection via 80th, and then come down, straight down to Ward, down to I-70. So there's definitely some benefit to the people on Sims and to the overall northwest part of the town. I think there is some benefit.
You say some benefit. Do you have any kind of numbers or percentage or anything?
We haven't run any numbers and any traffic modeling on it.
But your, is your sense that it's a major, would have a major impact in reducing traffic in that part of the city?
Yeah, we've got a, a number from a previous study where we'd probably draw about 10,000 cars a day down that road, so it would pull some numbers or some traffic from other roads.
Okay. Well, I, I do have the concerns that have been voiced ahead of me here concerning the, the Ward Road extension, without even thinking, taking into consideration at this point, the difficulty of selling that to the citizens of Arvada. So that one, I would put at a low priority, probably taking it off the list. And Lake Arbor Park, I think the same way, there, although it's over three million dollars, you know, there'd be some difficulty in responding to that piecemeal over time, but there would be the possibility of doing that with other funding. I do think that we need the, the Myers Pool, and whatever that agreement is with Apex and the school district, you know, I certainly understand City Attorney Daly's comments about, you know, it's not a contingent kind of thing, it's, are we, is that one of our projects or is it not, and it's at that cost? But I think that's something, we've got an investment there that's been there for a long time. It's a lot of use. The pool is going to just go out of, out of use unless we invest and do what we need to do with that pool. So I, I think that's a very high priority. And even the Stinger improvements, you know, at the cost there, and if we're talking about, I think we're talking primarily of the, that's the, the parking, is that right, the hard surface parking. I think that's a high priority. So I would, I have great, greater problem with Ward Road extension, the trail gap completion. As I say, I do wish that there were, some of those gaps were taken care of, but again, we may be able to do those over, over time. Piecemeal, Lake Arbor Park, the same way. So on the, the top, the top six projects there, I would be very much in favor of three of them, Ralston Road, George Myers Pool, and the Stinger improvements. The others would go to, probably off the list. So that's all I'll say for now.
Great. Nancy?
So because everyone else is giving their opinion, I'll go ahead and say that I too agree that the Ralston Road should be the number-one project. I am not in favor of the Ward Road extension, as I do believe it would be controversial. Plus, I don't like the idea of doing half of something with borrowed money. I'd want to see something completed. When I looked at the Citizens Capital Improvement paper, I didn't see the trail gap completion as being a high priority on that. Lake Arbor Park, I think that money should come out of our Parks Fund or capital. The George Myers Pool, I'm a little concerned about, since we have not settled on where that would go and what the implications of where that would go would be. Stanger improvements, I think, since we just had a lot of improvements with the Apex Bond, that one doesn't thrill me. Like Dot, I would prefer to see the 72nd Avenue and, John, widening. It would be great if we could do the whole thing. It doesn't state anywhere what would need to happen in order for that to happen. Do we need to get any kinds of permits or whatever? I would even prefer to see all of Sims Street done, so that we have a completed north-south street, even though it may not be in terms of capacity, but I think it would be nice to have a, a street completed. And as far as the Pomona Parcel's concerned, as much as I would like to see trails, I would, I think it would be even more important to do the increase of parking for the police station. I think that that would be an even more important aspect of Pomona Parcel. And I do think that, even though it's not a wow for citizens, I do think facility improvements would be important. The Parks Facility was one of the top choices in the Citizens Capital Improvement Paper. I guess one of the questions that I would have is, what is the likelihood of getting the land that is to the north currently in the future? I mean, is that a, just a nice wish, or is it, you know, is it really possible? Because if it's not, something has to be done with that building, and since it's an important structure for the city, I would prefer to see that built with, you know, in a quality way. I'd much prefer to see it concrete, although I'd like to have a little bit more discussion on the value of having a concrete building versus a, a metal frame building. And, you know, if there's some way that, I, I don't know, again, I guess I'd like to hear a little bit more about the difference in terms of the service facility between the Parks and the Northwest Service Facility. It sounds like both were kind of considered for road, for salting and, and so forth, but, but I, I do think that, given the fact that Parks is a number-one benefit to the city that citizens see as a benefit to the city, we need to continue to be able to maintain our parks well. And so if there's an issue of inefficiency because that Parks Building is falling apart, I, I think we need to discuss that.
We've been actively trying to get the property to the north. I don't, at this time, see that being feasible. Certainly, if presented the opportunity, the city will do everything they can to obtain it, but we've had no luck, obviously, for a period of time. And, and I don't know if I clarified, on the Park Structure itself, we were hoping to, this building here, to accomplish that by using our resources, our internal resources, not using bonding. So it would be a cash finance versus a bond. The Northwest Facility would be the bond piece. Does that help on that?
So you're, you're somewhat optimistic based upon our current finances that we could do the Parks Fleet Building replacement, which is using internal funds rather than...
I, I do. I feel like, well, at eight point seven million, I feel like we could make that happen over the next three years.
Okay, over the next three years. Okay, very good. Okay, I'll give my two cents worth. Definitely Ralston Road, that's, and I don't see any of us, you know, urging against that. I take off the Ward Road extension for either portions of it for the same reasons that have been previously well-stated. I, I worry more about the anti-element, trying to, you know, kill the whole deal because they don't want to see that thing go through. For me, a lot of this comes down to, just as the logic was for the original 72nd Bond, to, to really focus on something that's long-term and gets the most bang for the buck for our citizens, and would not be possible to do but for this kind of bond issue. So I support 72nd Avenue as much of that as we can possibly do. That section of 80th, I would like to see done if possible. And I would be willing to put money towards the Myers Pool for a couple of reasons. One, I don't see this thing happening but for us using some bonding capacity to kick in major dollars for it. I'm uncomfortable committing twenty-four million dollars to it when we've heard some discussion from the school district that, as I understand, they would be putting in about 10 million under, you know, under, if their, if their issue passes. So, and so I guess this is a question for legal or whoever. If the school board issue fails and their funding goes away, if we then say, okay, fine, yes, we wanted to do this, but the other part of the partnership didn't come through, and therefore, we're going to take it off, can we just refund? So if, if we were to commit fourteen million dollars to Myers Pool and the voters said yes to us but no to the school district, could we then just refund the fourteen million of, of the bond issue? I'm sure there would be some cost to that, rather than, because we couldn't redirect it to something else.
Yeah, that's a great question. What I would say...
What I would say is I'd like to, I'd like to explore that question with Bond Council and just see what, see what they say about that.
Okay. So, and I don't, I don't, I can't justify bonding for 20 years for a parking lot, period. I can't. I think the logic that, that we ought to find other funds for the Lake Arbor Park and for trail extensions, things of that nature. I mean, if you take the mentality that, of the, of the Christmas tree, that we want to put something under the tree for everybody, I think we water down what we can accomplish with this bond issue. I think we need to go for projects that are going to reduce congestion to the maximum amount possible and perhaps address the, a portion of the Myers Pool, not 100% of it. So that's where I come down. John?
Thank you. I had a quick, just a quick other thought on the Myers Pool. Think about whether something strategically like this would work if the bond authorization had 14 million in for the Myers Pool and the school district were not able to do their part. Do we have the ability to do the rest of it out of non-bonded funds? In other words, whether it be internal borrowing or, you know, cash funds or anything like that? I know we, we work our capital improvement project list, you know, pretty, it's pretty refined and so there's not money sloshing around. But, but you know, whether it be a combination of, of we've been fortunate enough the last few years to have some one-time funds, whether a combination of sources to potentially make up the other where we could, you know, bond for that at a lesser amount, but yet if, if we cannot derive partnerships that make it happen, we still have then the option to make that happen via other ways.
It would definitely have to come, I mean, you know, with our 10-year financial plan, there's no room in that today. But we certainly could look at one-time funds as you made reference to or even possibly lowering your fund balance reserve for a period of time and filling it back in. It's the same money, but, yeah, and there's certainly options to get to that. It may take a period of time, maybe an internal borrow from one of the enterprise funds or something that we pay it over a five or 10-year period of time.
Right, okay.
I heard Jim Sullivan's got a bunch of money that he's not sure what to do with.
He's 100 million, I think.
He's got that spent very well, thank you. Nancy Ford?
So about the Myers Pool, do we have any ideas or have we talked about, you know, where it might go if it didn't work where it is today?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Devon.
Yes, thank you, Brian. There has been some discussion about relocating it on some parkland that is planned in the northwest area for a park. And part of that discussion is generated by the fact that if we did commit to doing that project and, and we were focused on replacing it at the current site, in effect would, in effect, it would deny water for the youth aquatics programs for about three years because we'd have to demolish the building and then we'd have to take over three year, about three-year period to rebuild it on that same site. So the, where, where the high schools and the age group aquatic programs currently swim and train there, they wouldn't have that water available to them and there really isn't any other applicable water that they could use during that time. So that's one of the reasons why we've looked at the opportunity to relocate it somewhere else, build it on that site and then enable the high schools and the age group swim teams to continue using Myers Pool until such time that the other, that the new facility is ready.
And is that land that we would have to actually purchase or it's land that we currently own?
Land that we currently own.
And then would say, so I was talking to a constituent about this and in terms of the pool being in the northwest, would that take any, or would that have the possibility of taking, you know, money from the city in terms of people staying in hotels? Would they be more apt to stay in other cities then if the Myers Pool was in that location? Do you think that that would be an issue?
I do not, Nancy, because the, the people who utilize that pool are largely from the region where they wouldn't necessarily need to spend the night. I think largely, I think there's probably some that stay overnight in, in nearby, you know, hotels and so forth. But I think for the most part, it's people from the region that would travel back and forth.
And has there been any discussion on what would happen to the land where the Myers Pool is currently?
There has not been any discussion about repurposing that land at this, at this time.
Okay.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I'd just like to kind of update some, some thoughts here. You know, as others have indicated, I think Ralston Road is the, the number one priority. I would not go, as I mentioned before, with the Ward Road extension or the trail gap completion, Lake Arbor Park. It would be great if we can come in with some lesser, some smaller number for the Myers Pool. But I still think that's got to be on our high priority list and we need to deal with that. I do think after the other comments, perhaps the Stinger improvements primarily with the parking, although that's a small amount here. I think it's something that could be addressed through one-time funds. It's certainly not a project and we're talking about hard surface parking. It would not have to be done in, you know, a single large project. So that might come off the list, which would leave me with the top list there of just with Ralston Road and the Myers Pool. And then, you know, the others, we may need to talk some more about. 80th, the widening of 80th from Kipling to Elkhire would be, that would help a lot with our traffic congestion and just being able to move the traffic smoothly and safely. And of course, anything on 72nd, the widening there. I'd start with the railroad and then work from either side of that, get that underpass in there. That's the, that's the crucial thing. But anything on 72nd and on 80th would be the next high priorities for me.
Hey, Dot Miller?
Thank you. I just want to bring us back to the pool for one second. One of the conversations we had about moving it up to the northwest part of Arvada is the east side. And all of us LA Lower East Side people, who are Arvada people, that's a lot further for those students that don't have cars to drive to northwest Arvada. And I'm looking at Google Maps right now and I see this humongous parking lot right next to the pool and I'm wondering if it's at all feasible to build that pool in the parking lot so that you're building it right next door to where it is now and then have some, you know, share some parking with that huge lot where Alpha Graphics and BW3 says for the pool and then make the pool location a parking lot and just completely reverse it and you keep the pool on the same location and you don't have shut down the pool.
Why does that sound like Mile High Stadium when it was being built?
Yep.
Yeah. Might be something to look into.
I, I think it's something to look into. I would, I, we have concerns actually whether or not that site would be adequate for the pool that's been envisioned so far. We really don't think it, even, even getting away from the construction issues, we're concerned that that site may not be adequate for the pool that's been envisioned at this time. And we're also concerned that with the improvements that that pool would make, we might put some pressure on the surrounding neighborhood with respect to parking that could generate some concerns.
We've got some land over by Lake Arbor that would be great for a pool, wouldn't it?
You know, it doesn't surprise me that that came up. I had a feeling that was going to come up tonight. And, and I will say, you know, I agree with you, Mayor, in that I, I don't want to see capital money being, or bonded money being used for parking lots either, you know. So when I said that about the Pomona Parcel, I'm just saying in from, not necessarily from the, a bond or, you know, but I just think that in terms of doing a project over there, that to me is more of a priority than the trails because I know from talking to the constituents there, they don't mind the trails the way they are. But they are, you know, expressing troubles with the parking at the police station because it's, you know, we just don't have enough spaces. And as far as 80th, I, I didn't mention 80th, but I'm fine with 80th as well. I'm assuming if we did 80th, we would include sidewalks in that because currently there are no sidewalks on 80th and it's pretty dangerous. It's very narrow to bicycle ride or even walk. So I think that would be very important to include. Do we, I do have a question about 72nd. Do we have that designed and what is needed for 72nd to be completed other than money?
We have a conceptual design for West 72nd and what would be needed besides money is basically the condemnation of several residential properties that are on the north side of West 72nd as you approach the railroad tracks, as you're east of the railroad tracks. As a matter of fact, I actually recently met within about the last two years with homeowners and I think there's at least three, maybe four homes, four homes that would have to be literally taken. I mean, we'd have to pay relocation expenses, expenses for the property owners and, and, and take their property in order to complete the underpass for the railroad. So that's just something that I think we just need to be aware of.
And, and it was my impression that we were, we were having discussions with them. I remember one particular meeting where, you know, is it, does that look unlikely at this point? Except through condemnation or, I mean, you know, that they would not agree to condemnation? I mean, what?
Well, I don't, I don't know how you'd know that ahead of time. Basically, prior to entering into that sort of an action, there'd be a required round of negotiations and the city has an appraiser and they have an appraiser and you, obviously you try to work out a deal. Condemnation would be the very last thing that you, you'd really want to get into in that regard. So it's really hard to say because, because I just don't know, you know, what, what we'd offer and I don't know what they would think is fair.
The reason why I'm asking that is, is because I would think we would want projects that are ready to go if we're going to put them out for voter approval. And that one sounds like it might be a little controversial, but it would be nice to get a big project like that done.
Yeah, we definitely would have more work to do on that project if we were going to put it as part of the, you know, as part of this debt reauthorization measure. And while I'm on that subject, I hear you all kind of embracing West 80th Avenue from Kipling westward. And again, I think we are facing the same kinds of issues as we are on Indiana in terms of, of resolving all the issues we would need to resolve in order to make that project work. There is, there are definitely right-of-way issues that we would have to sort through and acquire right-of-way for. You know, in, in turning around and talking to Mr. Manware in behind me, I think we're looking at a very, very small likelihood that we would be able to resolve all of those and get design work done in a manner that would enable that project to be done within that three-year timeframe.
Mr. Devon, is that, would that be true of, if you were to do 80th from Kipling just to Sims, you know, just that section, which doesn't impact the railroad and may be more easily doable?
We have to look at that very often, you know, we're dealing with the county as well and some of those stretches. So, you know, you've got that dynamic that would go on, that would try to, we try to cram all that into a three-year period. The advantage with 72nd is it's all us. We believe we have a lot of the right-of-way except for what Mr. Devon mentioned. So it would be a lot smoother, a lot quicker project.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
So you're saying there's a chance?
On 80th? Well, small chance, small chance. I honestly, I, you know, some of these things we would have to research and explain to you a little bit more. But, you know, when, when you, when you have to negotiate for right-of-way, for those of you that have done that, it's not an easy, it's not an easy issue and also can get kind of emotional with the property owner. So that's a, that's why we're cautious.
No, I, I agree.
It's not quick either?
No. Speaking from experience.
Well, immediate possession can be fairly quick if you, if you go that route. And we can get, and frankly, using eminent domain condemnation powers for roadways is one of the few reasons that I think we as a council can justify use of eminent domain. We don't want to have to do it. And certainly as Chris has indicated, we would go to every step possible to try to reach fair settlements with people short of having to do that. But the bottom line is if they refuse, that's what that power is there for.
Right. So I just want to go back. Can you, and you may have said this in the presentation, I apologize if I missed it, but the reason why we're constrained by the three years having to, is that a bond issue?
Yeah, it's just a bond.
That's just their requirement? And there's no way of changing that? I mean, what would, is that even a fair question to ask?
It's a federal law.
Okay, so it's, there's not going to change that. So then, back to the very, very first slide, I think is the very first slide, where you said this is kind of confusing, so do you have any questions? On the?
Yes. That one?
Yeah, was it the analysis?
You said what you said, you borrowed 59 million.
And so I just wanted to go back to that because I, you're right, it was a confusing thing, but I wanted to make sure we got through this other stuff before I asked the question.
Yeah, so actually what our borrowing amount is 56 million and we would be getting paid a premium due to our bond rating and also due to the way the interest would be laddered. And so we would pay greater interest in the future, less interest today and therefore that's why we would get the premium. And that's why in these various scenarios, you will see the premiums greater as our interest, average interest is lower. And then as it grows, our premium is just less. But also why are we paying the same amount back, the total of 89 million back? Does that help at all?
Yeah, no, that does. So then, can we go to the 98 101 funds? And where it says that 60% of the first sales tax. So what happens to the other 40%? Does that?
So we have approximately 3 cents of sales tax, if you will. You know, our, our general operating rate is 3%. So really you're talking about 40% of that first one plus the additional.
No, I, I.
That comes to the general fund and is used for operating.
Yep, no, I get that now. I just, I was reading that a different way, so I appreciate that clarification.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to throw something out here that, and this does not indicate any unwillingness to move forward with an election this year. But does it, because of some of the uncertainty on 72nd and 80th Avenue, do we need to get our ducks in a row more before we go to the citizens and therefore push out an election further out? To be able, I'm, I'm hearing pretty clear direction that we want to put this money into roads rather than other types of projects. And I don't want us to not be able to do the roads that need to be done because we can't get them done in the three-year timeframe from now.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I would need to have further discussions with staff and perhaps bring something back. But what I'm hearing from the council, and obviously you guys will correct me if I don't have this correct, is exactly what you just mentioned. Ralston Road, absolutely, you're interested in that. West, it seems like West 72nd Avenue and the full, the full project on West 72nd Avenue seems to be something that you're interested in. And probably from a, from a conceptual standpoint, we have the most information on that available. Now, we would need to go back and take a good look at that because as, as Brian mentioned, the costs for that are, are something that we would definitely need to revisit. But as, as Bob mentioned, we have the right-of-way and the other kinds of things available to us already. We would just really need to look at the costs. The costs could be significantly more than what is shown on here because we need to update it. The, the concept goes back to probably about 15 or so years ago and so we would really need to update those costs. And then the, certainly we've heard some, some support for the Northwest Service Facility. We are, we seem to be hearing some concerns about the Myers Pool. Certainly at the 24 million that it's, that it's allocated, that's allocated in this plan. And I think that's part of the reason for the meeting with the school district is to understand what their, what their capacity is. But I think really understanding the cost for West 72nd Avenue is really important because that could, if, if, if we analyze that cost, we could be looking at something in the vicinity of 45, 48, 50 million dollars, which takes up a great deal of that funding for the, that's available for this bond. There's no question that that's an important segment of road. If, if you look at the, the east-west corridor there, there's a lot of congestion, especially when there's a train running. But even without a train, I've seen that road very congested. So we really need to, if that's, if you are all interested in that, we really need to fine-tune that estimate. fine-tune that estimate.
Is that what everyone would like to see?
So I just ran some numbers with
On the back of a napkin?
I did, I did. I have lots of different numbers here with listening to what everybody was saying and if we doubled the Seventy Second, like Brian suggested, I know that you don't know those numbers, but I did double it just for fun because I like numbers. With Ralston Road, Seventy Second with the railroad crossing and fourteen million to the pool, that's sixty-five point three million. Ralston Road with Seventy Second without the railroad and fourteen million to the pool is at fifty-three point three million.
Okay, is everybody in agreement? Let's have, let's get some refined numbers from the sense of direction that we've given you tonight and I think that's consistent with Mr. Pfeiffer's input as well. So let's sharpen the pencils a little bit more on, so we can get a better sense of what truly happens if, and what's the feasibility of Seventy Second, perhaps a segment of Eightieth, but that sounds a little far-fetched maybe. And certainly, I mean, Ralston Road is the no-brainer of the part. Nancy?
Well, I just wanted to say that one of the things that I was looking at in terms of building the roads was that our cost is less than the national average and, you know, I would imagine that may go up at some point. So to me, I think roads, you know, that really emphasizes the
The urgency?
The urgency of the roads.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Devon, is that everything you need from us at this juncture?
Yes, I would just like to ask the council one question. We scheduled this to begin at four o'clock and with coming back to you and the way our workshop schedule is situated right now, I'm wondering if you would be open to an additional meeting. We'll set the date and give you plenty of notice, obviously, but if this four o'clock timeframe works for you and if this, we could set another workshop at a four o'clock timeframe to have a similar discussion because we have a lot of work to do and a lot of information to present to you and direction to receive from you in order to really get this prepared for a ballot measure.
Yeah, subject to our calendars, what I, frankly, I kind of like about the four o'clock is I feel like we're a little fresher at four than we might be later in the, did you have something else, Nancy?
Maybe?
Yeah, okay, great.
I was just going to say, I was okay with the idea.
Yeah, okay. Good. Okay, so let's work on that. Okay, anything else for our first workshop session? Okay, now we're going to go up and I believe we're going to be going into executive session for, or not? No, just, just regular, just chitter-chatter that we like to do in our pre-meeting, then we'll be back down here at six o'clock. Very good. Thank you all. Our workshop, we had a previous workshop where we talked about the sales and use tax bond reauthorization, which I think was a very productive meeting, starting at four and now we are reconvened after getting a little dinner break. And, Mr. Devon?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we are, we will be presenting you a presentation by our consultant who will be here shortly, we hope. Okay.
Mr. Devon, is there any part of this we can take on without the consultant or are we pretty well?
We're checking.
This is like a finely tuned watch, that's what
Would you want to have the planning commissioners reintroduce themselves to the city council?
Sure.
How about if we do that?
That'd be great. Good start.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm T.O. Owens, chairman of the Planning Commission. Thanks for having us here tonight.
And I'm Patty Connell, Patricia Connell, also a member of the Planning Commission.
And I'm Steve Hadd, I'm here too.
I'm Jenny Wolf Schlock, Planning Commission member, so thanks for having us.
Doug McGee, one-year member of the Planning Commission.
Mr. Kamens, are you just here observing?
I was just here.
So I'm wondering, so I'm wondering how you got promoted to these seats versus, I know you used to be on the Planning Commission. I was, I was like Okay, very good.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and it looks like we'll go ahead and have staff begin the presentation.
Good idea.
We'll go ahead and get started and hopefully Todd Messenger, our consultant, will be here shortly, but to keep things moving, we're here tonight to, of course, talk about the land development code and code module one, which you all received copies of. So we wanted, the purpose of the meeting is really to update you on where we are in this process, to provide an overview of the organization of the land development code as a whole and then talk about module one. So as an overview, you've all seen this information previously, but just as a reminder, we're looking at the new LDC, or the LDC update as a way to implement the 2014 comprehensive plan, to implement the city council's strategic results, to hopefully streamline the development review process and to simplify, modify, simplify, update and modernize the LDC. So we're kind of in the middle of the process now, you know, at the point to starting to draft the language, at least initially, and to set up the format. And we will be having an open house here coming up on module one as well at the beginning of June. So the direction from the strategic assessments that we discussed with you in the past are really to look at the planned unit developments and determine if we can review or replace the standard zones, replace them with standard zone districts, to look at compatibility issues as it relates to infill and redevelopment, to evaluate parking and determine, you know, is there a difference in urban areas versus suburban areas, to determine if we can make some adjustments to parking, looking at housing choice and affordability, administrative versus public hearing roles and what that threshold should be, to look at flexibility in height and also, again, the council's strategic results. So in terms of the organization of the document, this is the way our current code is set up. There are basically ten articles. We go from kind of general provisions to the process, zone districts, use regulations, development standards, then kind of at the end, enforcement and rules and measures and definitions. So we're looking at potentially reorganizing the organization a little bit, to start mainly with the procedures, then talk about districts' uses, development standards and subdivisions, and then finish with the process. So basically, it's getting the information that people really look for most often upfront in the document and to have the procedural information that's less likely to be looked at by the general public towards the end of the process, the end of the document. The code organization, again, so the preliminaries, what's this all about, kind of the beginning, the legislative intent for the ordinance, and then have zone districts, land uses, buildings and structures. So what can I do and how much can I build? So that information, dimensional standards, landscape requirements, parking, those types of issues would be addressed. And then site design and environmental quality, how does it have to be designed, what are some architectural design standards that we may have, site design standards? And then have non-conformities, which is what can I do with my existing buildings if they don't conform to what the new regulations are proposed to say. We'll then have information on the development review process, what process do you need to go through for each type of application enforcement? What happens if you aren't meeting the intent of the code after a particular structure is constructed or site is developed? And then measurements, word usage, rules of construction, definitions towards the end of the document. Code module one, just to see if I forgot anything. Preliminaries, so again, what's this all about? Zone districts and land uses that are allowed in those zone districts and definitions. The rest will then be filled in with future code modules two and three. So that's kind of the information we're looking at here this evening with the information that you have in your packet. So the preliminaries, again, kind of what's the purpose and intent of the document, who has authorized to do what, what's approvable by the community development director versus planning commissioner council? Applicability of the various regulations, who do they apply to? What are the minimum standards and compliance with the code? Part two is the establishment of new zone districts and Todd can give you kind of great information here about how we are trying to condense those from fifteen, we currently have thirty-seven zone districts identified in the code. So that's including, you know, Old Town and all the various sub-districts in Old Town and new communities with the various sub-districts that are new communities. So we're really trying to reduce those because we have several of those districts that we don't even use today. So the proposed ordinance, the proposed draft in front of you has fifteen zone districts rather than thirty-seven. And a lot of those are consolidated to bigger groups. We tried to look at all the districts and see if we couldn't combine them into one district rather than three or four. So the residential strategy would be to replace a number of districts into what we have as residential conservation and residential infill. And those primarily would be conservation districts, reservation, residential conservation would work towards existing zone districts where we don't see much in the way of change. It would allow people to do minor additions to their homes, possibly scrape and rebuild a very similar home, but wouldn't really allow for expansion in terms of lot coverage or building height. And so that's really the stable areas of the city, very stable neighborhoods would have that district applied to it. Residential infill would also be existing developed areas, but if we determine as a city that certain areas should be allowed to expand in terms of uses or density, maybe allow for larger homes on particular lots, that district would accommodate those needs. And all of these would still have to be mapped. Right now, we're just looking at developing the zone districts, how they'd be implemented, we'd still need to look at that in more detail. And then for new development, we'd have residential districts that are based on the densities that are allowed in those particular districts. And so the intent there is really to line those districts up with the comprehensive plan. So we'd have a residential district that would allow up to six dwelling units per acre, one that would allow up to thirteen dwelling units per acre, and one that would allow up to twenty-four units per acre. And those are consistent with districts that we have today with some minor tweaks.
Dan, I'll stop you here.
Oh, sorry.
Mr. Mayor up first and then Nancy forward.
Okay, thank you. I had just a quick question on that particular subject. So it seems like some of the, a lot of the residential zoning we have now on undeveloped parcels, the breakpoint is single-family or multifamily. This seems to say either-or, all we care about is the density of it. Is that, is that kind of the intent of that?
That's the direction we're toying with, yes. So you'd get a density of six dwelling units per acre
And achieve it however you want.
Correct. So you could have a large amount of open space and a compact development, or you could do more of a typical single-family that kind of took over, you know, addressed the entire property.
Spread more out. So to me, that seems like a, just a giant change from what we've done up to now. As we go forward, I guess I would want to make sure that the planning commission looks at that carefully as well as the citizen group that you're, that's together that's working on it. And make sure you have a really robust discussion at the public open house about that because I think, to me, that's the place where there would be the biggest change and the biggest, you know, as soon as one of these developments is proposed next to somebody, that's a giant change, so.
Yeah, and let me just clarify
And I guess I would want to know more about it too.
Sure, yes, definitely, definitely understand that. The intent really though with those districts would be for greenfield development, where we have infill development kind of in the existing city, the residential infill would probably be applied or the residential conservation. So they would be allowed to develop a project that would be similar to the character of the existing neighborhood versus kind of a whole different type.
Yeah, well, I understand the residential conservation where you want to keep areas the way they are, keep them largely the way they are, but the rub I think becomes when it's greenfield, new development, where's the dividing line between the conservation and then just giving a freedom with just a number of units per acre? I mean, to me, that's still, I look at that as just a giant change in the way we've done it up to now. Now, maybe a positive change, I just, that's the spot I would sure like to see lots of effort concentrated on, trying to really thoroughly understand that and particularly I'd be very interested in what the public thinks of that.
Nancy?
So Rob, I had a question about the, about Old Town. There are seven districts in Old Town. Could you just briefly explain why it requires seven zoning districts?
When the Old Town zoning was put in place, it really was to, it was intended to evaluate the character of the various areas of Old Town versus look at the uses necessarily that are allowed because a lot of uses are allowed in the variety of districts. So it was really to look at what's kind of the commercial core, the core along Wadsworth and Ralston versus some of the residential areas to the west where some of the homes had already been converted to commercial uses, but we still wanted to maintain the residential character. So a district was created for that purpose. And then on kind of the east side where we anticipated some larger development, that was, that sub-area was put in place. So it really had to do a lot with the various contexts, the design, the existing structures and what would be compatible if new development were to occur, less so than uses, which is typically what you deal with in a zoning ordinance or a land development code.
And if I can just add that to, the Old Town area has form-based zoning and so you're talking about uses and forms and in some places uses are in residential and in some places commercial is in residential, so that's why we end up having more zone districts than you would normally expect in a small area.
Okay.
All right, so then for non-residential areas of the city, we'd be looking at a number of new districts. We would pretty much jettison all of our existing commercial districts and we're still having some conversations over whether we need to have a general commercial district or not, but the way it's written, as you saw the draft for the meeting this evening, there is a residential business district which could be applied along Ralston Road as an example, where there's a character kind of of the single-family structures, the single-family character that we may want to preserve and there might be other areas of the city where we would look at that as well, but that we would allow commercial uses in. So that's kind of a little bit back to the form-based idea where we may allow a number of different uses of different uses, but it's the particular structure type and characteristic that we'd want to maintain. We would then look at mixed-use districts. And the intent there is really to have three different styles of mixed use: suburban, an urban, and a transit to address our commuter rail station areas. But those would allow a number of different uses to occur on the properties, either as a single use, or potentially vertical mixed use, or even horizontal mixed use. So there's no requirements for any of those particular land use forms, but those various areas would be allowed to have a number of different land uses, including residential. You know, we have some larger shopping centers that are probably coming towards the end of their lifespan, and we may want to maintain some commercial development along Wadsworth as example. But for larger parcels that are a little deeper, we may be able to accommodate residential up front along an arterial street with some residential, or commercial along the arterial street with residential back behind as a transition.
Okay, I've got a question on that. I mean, in the past, we've had the situation, and the property at approximately was sixty-sixth to sixty-eighth in Indiana comes to mind, where we have fought efforts for that property to go in residential, you know, recognizing that it was one of our last remaining commercial type of properties. Are you talking about giving a mixed-use designation, which means it could either go commercial or residential? Is that what you're talking about?
Potentially. Not, again.
Okay, and that's, and that raises my concern of if we want to maintain for exclusive for commercial use, I'm a little concerned that a mixed-use designation gets the development community who sees doing residential as faster, easier, cheaper, whatever.
Sure.
And, you know, if that becomes a use by right, that could preclude our ability to preserve areas that we think need to be developed commercially.
Yeah, and that's why I mentioned earlier that as staff, we've kind of looked at the idea of do we need to maintain some kind of general commercial district that would, in certain situations, be more appropriate than a mixed-use corridor? And mostly for mixed use, we were thinking, you know, like Wadsworth, Eightieth, some of those where we do have fairly large commercial parcels that may be coming towards the end of their life. But if there, if we do create a kind of a general commercial district, that could be applied in situations where we don't want to allow mixed use, or the opportunity for residential to encroach. So that's certainly something we want to look at.
Okay. Go ahead.
And then we would certainly maintain our industrial districts, be that a light industrial or, we've said heavy industrial, but really what we're talking about is not the heavy industrial of a, of a, you know, coal-fired power plant or anything like that. Obviously, we don't have that here in Arvada. And so we're toying with the idea of, or toying with the names for those districts to not give the wrong impression because we really, I don't think, want heavy industry in the city. But there are some industries that may have outdoor storage needs that are appropriate in a heavier industrial district, whatever that name might be. So those would replace the I-1, the I-2 districts, and potentially the Clear Creek, and Clear Creek districts. And then we would have a Parks and Open Space District. Old Town would generally stay the same, although we want to look at, just reevaluate it to make sure everything's working properly, but there's no intent for there to be any wholesale changes to the Old Town district. And then for planned unit development, we would really like to consolidate that into just one planned unit development district rather than having various flavors. And to use that as the instance for extraordinary development, something that's out of the ordinary, where today, we kind of use PUDs in a lot of areas of the city. We would propose to convert a lot of those to standard zone districts, but leave the PUD option for somebody who comes in with a project that just does not fit through the code and that we feel is an appropriate kind of use. Then we'll also have a section of the ordinance similar to what we have today, or, I'm sorry, yes, similar to what we have today with the land, with land use tables as they relate to the various zone districts. And the idea is to kind of break those down into the different land use types that we see throughout the city. So we would still maintain kind of the feel of zone districts across the top of the land use tables, uses along the left side, but we would try to consolidate those into particular groups to make them easier to find. And then there could potentially be three levels of review that would be outlined in the table. Those that are allowed, that don't really have any standards associated with them, they still have site plan-related standards, and they would need to go through the site plan process, but no specific regulations related to them. There would be limited uses that would still be administrative review areas, but they would have specific standards related to them, maybe hours of operation, characteristics of the operation, things that are, would be pretty standard, but that would need to be addressed and reviewed during the site plan process. It may also be where we talk about if a use is adjacent to residential, it has some specific requirements, that if it wasn't adjacent to residential, would not have those requirements. Then there would be conditional use approvals, or conditional uses that would require public hearing approvals. So those maybe would go just to planning commission or a planning commissioner council. And then we would have cases that would necessarily have to go to both planning commission and city council. Those would be things like annexations, rezonings, those legislative issues that need to come, or quasi-judicial issues that need to come before the council. So in terms of how the land.
I'm sorry, Mr. Jones has a question.
Real quick, before you move on. So, for instance, if somebody fits inside of a, you know, a use by right, but then they're asking for an exception on something, you're saying that's still going to then throw them out of the, maybe the staff approval into a planning commission hearing and a city council hearing? Or are you saying that if it's a use by right and they're asking for some variance on setbacks or what have you, that's not going to trigger a public hearing?
At this point, we haven't delved into those details yet, but we anticipate that there would still be, as we have today, a 20% modification that could be approved administratively. Beyond that, we still need to kind of look at what that process might be, whether that does kick it into a public hearing, does that go to board of adjustment, as we have variances today that do. So that's one piece we still need to look at and work with the advisory committee on that because we have not touched on that at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Mark McGough.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Smetan. I'm wondering, just trying to put a couple of things together here with the new zoning districts, proposing here that there be just residential, six dwelling units, thirteen or twenty-four. And then following that, we talk about collapsing PUDs into a single zone. So does that mean that somebody who today would come with a request for a planned unit development through the public hearing process would not have the public hearing process if they simply were within that zone and let's say they wanted medium density, thirteen units per acre, they would just simply process that? It would not be, not go through the same public hearing process for the, for the planned unit development?
That would be correct, yeah. So there would be a number of standards that would be put in place to kind of, you know, give the playing field for what that project would need to look like. And those would be fairly detailed, and that's a section we haven't gotten into yet. But as long as a project met those parameters for landscaping and parking and building design, then it would be an administrative process versus a PUD process.
So that's what I wanted to clarify. It would definitely be administrative process, not the public hearing process, as long as they were within that zoning district. Okay. Thank you.
Correct. And if they wanted to do something outside of the zone district, then that would be where we would talk PUD.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Okay. So in terms of the land use table layout that you have in front of you, we would look at, again, limited, allowed uses, which in the table would be an A, so that would be a use of just by right, except for site planning, but would be an administrative process and would be allowed with very few constraints. We would then have an L on the table, which again would be limited, which would have some parameters associated with it beyond just the typical site plan requirements, again, operational standards. Then we would have the conditional use permit, or the conditional use, uses, that doesn't make a lot of sense, but those would be subject to a public hearing and would also have some kind of operational standards associated with them. We may have things that are restricted by sub-district, so where, within the, let's say, the mixed-use districts, we might have things, we're trying to avoid this, but we might have things that would be maybe allowed outright in a suburban context, but might need more standards associated with them in an urban or transit context. So those would be listed as limited, and then you'd look at the corresponding section of the code to figure out what the restrictions are as they relate to what context. And then we would have the references on the right side of the land use chart so that you would be able to go quickly to the section that would apply to that particular standard. And in the electronic version, those would be all hyperlinked, so you just click on it, it would take you directly to the section of the code you need to apply. So when we've settled on the land use table itself and made sure we have the uses that make sense in terms of allowed, limited, and conditional, then we will look at the specific requirements associated with those. So the dimensional standards, the setbacks, the building coverage, that will be the next step, once we've kind of settled what uses we think are appropriate, just as, again, as an allowed use versus one of the other processes. So our next steps are to continue the drafting process. And we do have meetings coming up with the technical committee, which is our internal committee, and the advisory committee this week on Thursday. So we'll be discussing the same information with the, both of those groups, and trying to drill down a little deeper into what uses make sense. Did we get it right? Did we get it wrong? What do we need to take a look at? We'll then have community open houses. The first one, again, will be on June 7th. Will be in the atrium here at City Hall from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And there, we will provide the information from code module one. We anticipate that we'll have a number of boards related to the various proposed zone districts that the public can look at, comment on. We'll also have an ability for them to comment online through our website and provide written comments at the meeting if they choose to go that route. We're also putting together a survey, an online survey, that will relate to some of the topics, and we'll have that up and ready to go by that June 7th meeting. And then we've got a couple of other ones coming up throughout the year. So for the public to be involved, we'll continue to have our advisory committee that, it is open to the public. We speak directly with the advisory committee, but the public is welcome to attend those meetings to hear what is happening in person. We'll have the community open houses. Our website is kind of the repository for all the information related to the code, and that's advancearvada.org. And we're in the process of making that more interactive. And it will be the location where people will be able to go and review the draft documents as we move forward. And we've started, we will be using a piece of software, and maybe Loretta can touch on civic comment a little bit, but it's a very interactive way for comments to be provided. And then we'll continue to use social media and newsletters. So I don't know if you want to just explain.
Mr. McGough's got a question before you move on.
Yes, as I'm thinking about this with the, if these proposals were adopted and we had the new residential designations, and as we had talked about before in my previous question about whether somebody would be, have a proposal reviewed administratively rather than through the public hearing process, are there, wondering whether it might be compiled for us or whether there might be representative sampling of some of the previous projects that we've considered through the planning commission and the council, how they may have proceeded, what kinds of projects we've had in the past that would now be handled administratively, and what that would, what that impact would be?
We certainly can do that. We can come up with some examples.
Some examples would be.
And kind of walk through, yeah, the current process.
Okay, this one, we went through the public hearing process, we did this, this, and these were the steps. Now, if it were handled administratively, this is the way it would have handled. So basically, it would be moving almost to the final development stage. I mean, through the administrative thing, it would just proceed through all that administrative review.
That's.
I'd like to know which, at least some representative sample of those that we've looked at over the last year or something that will be fresh in our memories to see how they might fare under the proposal.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. And that gets a little bit back to what Todd has presented in the past, where we still have to figure out, you know, a lot of what we deal with, with PUDs is the compatibility issue more than anything. And so we really have to come up with standards that address those myriad of compatibility issues. And that's what we will certainly bring back to the planning commission, the advisory committee, and to council.
But that would mean that the determination of compatibility would be administrative rather than through the public hearing process?
Correct. But we're hoping that we can say, here's where, here's where the city council was on a particular project and what they felt a compatibility issue or concern was, and here's how we took that concern and codified it, so that we don't run into that issue in the future.
When we look at this big pinwheel of compatibility elements that Mr. Messenger gave us recently, we'd have to get some consensus on these to provide direction to the administrative process.
That's correct, yeah. And we plan on coming back with you with a lot more detail as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's where I see the biggest struggle on this, is that as I look at this city council, I see some people who want to have their fingerprints on every single project, every single detail of every single project, and others who would say, well, on some of these decisions, wouldn't it be more efficient and come up with the same result if we just do them administratively? And a concept that both, I think, Dot Miller and John Marriott have suggested is that we ought to have various levels of, and I think, Dot, you almost referred back to the fire district in terms of different levels of attention that have to be paid to these kind of things. I mean, a perfect example last week, and it was one that had to come before us as the city council because it involved an annexation, was that single house at Sixty-Fourth and Quaker, which was frankly a no-brainer, but it had to go through that process. Whereas if it didn't involve an annexation, maybe that's the kind of thing that could be handled administratively. But as the sensitivity, or particularly if there's, if it's outside the box of what could be approved administratively, we've got to define what that box is.
Sure.
Is how I'm looking at this.
Yeah.
We've got to say, these are the things that, you know, the citizens of Arvada, we know are going to be comfortable with, you know, and they should be approved administratively. If a developer is looking to do it within that box, then they then they should know that this can be something that can be reviewed administratively and as long as all the i's are crossed, the t's are, or the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, and that you're not asking for any exceptions, then, you know, both the developer and frankly the community can say, this is the kind of thing that we ought to just approve. And everybody should have that certainty. It's when we get outside the box and defining what that box is that it's got to go through a public hearing process, and hopefully an efficient public hearing process, both at the Planning Commission level and at city council. And if somebody wants to go outside the box, then they're knowing that there are risks involved and that there's going to be a more robust examination. And the citizens will know that, you know, hey, if somebody's wanting to do something outside the parameters of what we would expect here, then that's got to come to both the Planning Commission and city council.
Yes, and we definitely want to work with Planning Commission and city council to determine, you know, where that break line is. And hopefully we can get, you know, the intent is really to get more cases into the administrative, but that doesn't mean every case has to be in the administrative, obviously.
Yeah, I think you're gonna, you know, and like I said before, I think you may get some resistance from some of city council that, certainly I have views, I mean, I remember when I was out in the audience looking at former city councils where there were discussions about brick color and, you know, all that kind of stuff that frankly, I don't think we're the experts on to make those kind of decisions. You remember those too, Mr. McGough?
Yeah.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I'm interested to, or I'm anticipating what, you know, you and the committee may come back with what that box is because, you know, as I think back, there have been projects that staff has recommended for approval that was a 7-0 no. And so I think that box, I agree, that box has got to be pretty well-defined with a lot of input because, and then there's been cases where the Planning Commission has recommended it to council on a 7-0 yes, and it came to us and it was a 7-0 no. So, and again, I think that's why we're having this conversation. So I would just encourage you and the committee and whomever else is working on this that that box is really examined carefully.
As Mr. Howard would tell us, the devil's in the details. Mr. Marriott?
I just wanted to bring up a recent case by which I would encourage you to tread very carefully as you go forward with this type of thing. And that was the public storage out on Indiana, where it was a use by right and maybe would fit within these parameters you're talking about, about administrative approval. But I think that was a case where we had some unanticipated consequences of that being a use by right in that zoning district, which is, you know, that case was decided for different reasons, but why we put a temporary moratorium on that while we can study that. But that, I see that administrative process as having some pitfalls. And I would encourage you to really think about those. I mean, think really, really hard about those. You know, when, when the citizens elected officials make a decision, they can agree with it or not agree with it, but the process was correct by which the decision was made. As soon as it all just becomes administrative, citizens can feel that due process wasn't given or they weren't, they weren't heard. Their concerns weren't adequately weighted. And so I think that's one of the cruxes of this whole land development rewrite. I agree with the mayor about, I think there's certainly things we can all agree on that could certainly go through an administrative process. And again, hopefully a very efficient administrative process where it can be an abbreviated, an abbreviated thing. But where that line is drawn between where it can be administrative and where it's not administrative is really, really important, really, really important. And, you know, just, I think we need to keep in mind the thoughts of an Arvada citizen who's having developed, development's going to happen in close proximity to them or in their neighborhood or on their route to work or something where it has some effect on them and what their expectations are of how the process should go to ensure that they have adequate input.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Nancy Ford?
I would just like to add to that. With the definition of compatibility, I think that there are variables on that chart that hold a greater, would score higher in terms of compatibility. So, you know, while we laugh at the brick, there have been recent cases where brick, the color of the brick was used as a measure of compatibility when there were other variables that were far greater in terms of making the project compatible or incompatible. So I think that we really have to, whether it's by a, you know, process of numbering, you know, what's more important, you know, giving a number, various combinations using those variables, I think that's critical. Because I, it disturbs me that, you know, brick is used as, you know, a major compatibility issue when other things are much more visual.
If I could, anything from the Planning Commission members? If anybody would have anything they would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to echo Mr. Marriott's thoughts. I think that our process is very participatory in our city. And that, that including the public in that process brings us together as a community and is a fabric of our community. And any change that we make in, for expediency that goes counter to the inclusivity of the process and making and helping people feel as though they're members of our community and they contribute, I would be very concerned with any of those things because I do think that it is one of the things that makes people like to live here because they know they can come down and, and, you know, some folks shake their fist at Planning Commission or city council, and some folks come and say, thanks for doing a good job, or we really like this project, or whatever that is. But however they come and participate, it's important that our citizens feel like they can participate. And if we take that away from them, I think, we need to be cautious about when we do.
Because I had access to and asked for a printout of the land development code draft. And as I went through it, I was thinking, sometimes there are controversial issues and sometimes there are issues where it might be personal. But to limit the input of the public, that, that has to be an item to be considered. What, what is administrative and what still is needed for, this is okay? And what is then needed for input? It doesn't mean that it influences people, but it gives them an opportunity to express that. But I see where some of the items for the administrative would save time and where it avoided people having to vote or follow through, but I still need, see some of it that isn't still needed.
I'm almost wondering if there would be a procedure whereby city council could opt out of the administrative, you know, where something is, you know, sort of, yes, it looks like it's administrative, but council, early on, and not at a, at a last minute, but certainly early on in the process, either at a sketch plan or review or some other time where we say, wait a minute, this is, you know, while this may have looked like it was in the box for the following reasons, we think it ought to come out of the box and go through the full process.
I guess that's where I was, had mixed feelings about some of these areas is because there might still need to be administrative and votes by the city council.
One other thing that sort of concerns me is that things that may seem administrative, and again, this goes back to the thought that this, we have a participatory community. What seems simple and administrative to one person may be dear and wholly affect another person. And it may affect their family or their neighborhood in a way that, that maybe is not, is not obvious. And I, I don't want us to fuss over the color of brick or grass or any of those things, but I certainly don't want us to disturb the fabric of our community that we've all worked very hard to build.
I think that's fair, T.O., but then you've got the flip side of it is that if you've got a piece of property that's appropriately zoned and it's a use by right, you know, just because the neighbor next door would prefer that that lot stay vacant and that they have a private park, they don't have a right to that private park.
I totally agree. Although, having said on the Board of Adjustments, sometimes just having a public venue to air that grievance makes it, makes a better neighborhood. And after all, we are here as city government to make a harmonious and the best city that we can. And so if we have to have, if we have to have an administrative hearing so that, and I don't mean a public hearing, so that it allows somebody the opportunity to air that grievance and make for better neighbors, then isn't that essentially what the job of our, of our government is?
Can I add some comments before we lose some of these thoughts? Some of the ideas that we did talk about was not excluding a neighborhood meeting or neighborhood input process, even with administrative approvals. Then the other thing is, kind of like the baby step approach for administrative approvals is still having call-up or ratification provisions by Planning Commission or city council on certain cases. So that you have the opportunity to say, well, okay, maybe we need to take a look at this. It could still go through that process, but you'll have that opportunity at the end to say, public hearing.
And I'm almost thinking there's some, I know some cities almost put some things on the consent agenda. And then if, and that might be, you know, one forum in which the city council through, you know, input from the citizens would say, wait a minute, this one looks a little bit meatier than just an administrative review. Okay. Next.
A couple of comments that I had. Well, I do agree that public input is really important in the process as this goes through. I think that more straight-zoned neighborhoods may be beneficial. And using zoning that's appropriate and up-to-date may prove beneficial because especially if going through this process, the public is well-informed. If I, as a resident, got a mail or saw an email or whatever, I'd pull up that map and look at my house and say, what's going on around me? How are we going to zone this around me? Then I would know better. And as a potential purchaser of a new home or I might know what's coming next door by the zoning rather than being surprised with a PUD down the road, which is essentially a rezone or a modification to the existing zoning. So I think I would appreciate more useful zonings than we have now or more applicable in those terms.
And I think that goes to the certainty for both the residents and for the development community.
Right, right. And I would, adding to what Mr. McGough said earlier, I would like to see how this affects the development review timeline overall and how it may have changed the timeline for different developments as they had come through the process. Because I know some of those times it's lengthy and others maybe cut shorter. And how would, how is this land development rewrite going to affect the overall timing for development? So, those are a couple of my thoughts.
So, my comments also about the administrative versus a public process. I agree that the interaction with neighbors and getting to know neighbors, that's one of the directives of the council and staff to have neighbors form HOAs, be more knowledgeable about who their neighbors are and stuff. And we don't want to take away that process. A neighborhood meeting, though, still allows for that to happen. But as I hear all of these comments, some of the criteria could be either easy in the sense that a infill development never is an administrative process because that's change in someone's neighborhood that's usually very difficult, no matter how good that infill development is. The number of dwelling units could be a threshold, you know, 50 or more, 25 or more, no matter what the size of the property. So the box could be in many ways defined. And I like your idea of maybe the council during that early process where developers are meeting with staff and going over the timeline for approval and stuff, that they share what they're discussing with council to say, these are ones we think are administrative, here's a summary of what those are, do you agree? And there's a way to put them into the public process early on so the developer knows or not. I did want to say, I thought the write-ups, the community character or refinement was very well-done. I thought the land use or the zoning districts were well-thought-out. I thought it would simplify things, not only for staff and for council and Planning Commission, but also for citizens. Make it easier for them to understand. The land development code is pretty, pretty big and pretty hard to understand in some ways. So I think any way we can simplify it but still keep the process deliberate and intense when we need it to be, I think, is good. Two, well, I'll just mention one minutia that I saw. And it's in the boilerplate where we list the intent and purposes. We talk about improving transportation options, and that's good, you know, commuter rail, bus, whatever that might be, pedestrian. But I think we need to actually mention transit stations in the list of statements about intent and purpose of the land development code. And I think where it fits is where connectivity. So we have, make sure that we connect neighborhoods to neighborhoods and also connect neighborhoods to employment centers, shopping areas, and community service areas. Well, I think we also need to provide connectivity to the three transit stations. And we don't list it anywhere in our land, at least what I saw. So I think maybe in the intent and purposes, we just insert that so that's one of the purposes that this land development code means. Thank you.
And I, of course, agree with everything that's been said. I do love the fact that I can look on my iPhone and actually see the table. I can't see it on paper when I try and look at it without putting a second pair of glasses on in order to see it. So I think this is a huge improvement. But we are Americans and we're Coloradans and we're Arvadans, and we like to have our chance to have our say. We're fiercely independent. And if we move too much to administrative, it helps development, but it hurts our community. And we need to be very careful about that balance.
I agree with that to a point. The concern I have is that if we have so much uncertainty in terms of, you know, what the expectations of either the citizens or the development community have, then it starts to scare away potential good projects that might come into your community. And what I don't want to see is that we get the reputation of, you know, by God, don't go to Arvada because, you know, you know, we've got pitchforks
We're in transit, yes, we are in no charge.
and torches and nothing gets approved here.
Yeah, which is...
Which Steve remembers from...
Which we did.
Yes.
As a matter of fact. Back in the olden days, when I was on the Planning Commission, we, we lived and died by the PUD. We spent a whole lot of time negotiating colors of brick, colors of roofs. And some of those were really fierce discussions. And, and part of that, for us, that was, part of that was an enjoyable part of the process to be able to do that. And, and not necessarily get down to colors, but to take a development and work together and making, making it a very creative, innovative development because we had the flexibility of the PUD. And so when the idea came up that we're going to do away with PUDs in the first land development code meeting I went to, that was a real shock to my system. But now having, having gone through the discussions and taking a broader view and a view aside of it, I think that there's a lot to be said for it and that there's a way to do it to make some things black and white, to in fact do away with PUD, but still make sure that the public is, is part of it. And my belief is that I think there's a real effective way to do it. And the discussion we're having tonight goes a long way to, for the committee to solidify some of the things that we need to watch for, is one thing. The other is, the thing is, is that we need to keep, in looking at the entire system and how it's going to operate, that going forth in the future, we're about out of large tracts of land. There are not any really left. And that, the land that is left is pretty much spoken for now. So what we're going to really be looking at very closely is infill and redevelopment. And we really need to focus... And, and we really need to focus on that, because what is left for infill and redevelopment, we really want to do correctly. And my impression of the way the process is going is that's, that's going well. The other thing that is going to be, I think, an interesting topic that we need to really pay close attention to is, is the, that has been mentioned, the commercial developments that we have that are going to be aging out, and are going to be subject to redevelopment, the strips, specifically the one-story strip developments, and the trend towards when they get put down, to redevelop with first floor as commercial, and then high-rise above them for, for high-density residential, and how those are developed, and how those follow the rules, and what fits in our community and what doesn't. As, as I'm sure you all know, we're looking, when the gross reservoir project is done, we're going to increase our water capacity significantly. And so we will in fact have the water for a whole lot more people, but we're not going to have the land for single-family development to accommodate them, and the only place left is density. And, and so that's one of the things we really need to be cognizant of as we're developing that, is what really fits together, what really fits in our environment, that's going to, that's, I think, and that's, that's an area where the public, based on past experience, where the public is going to have a real loud voice on what they want to see developed and what they do not. And, and so I think we need to really be very careful and think very carefully about how we want to do that. And what, in what situations is it going to be rental, and how much of that is going to be low-income, and how much of it is going to be, given that we can ever build condos again, to be able to balance that out and pay particular attention to how that fits into the community where those, as those, those shopping centers and the older multifamily residential areas need to be redeveloped.
Right. Okay, any other comments from council before I turn it back to Mr. Devon and say, what do you want to do next? Looks like it's to you, Mr. Devon.
Yes, well, as Rob illustrated...
And Rob, thanks for pitch-hitting. I don't know what happened.
Yeah, thank you, Rob.
Good, you did a good job. Much better than an attorney would do. Just saying.
The, we're going to continue the process and continue with these joint meetings between the city council and the Planning Commission. I think there was some great input tonight. I think the discussion about compatibility is a really key discussion. I think that's where we all understand that that's going to be where the, you know, where the rubber hits the road, is defining that compatibility issue. And so we're going to continue to work on that. Mr. Messenger had his, had the wrong date on the calendar, so we apologize. We apologize for that. But we'll, we'll continue to move forward with this process and come back to both the Planning Commission and city council as we complete the continued review of the modules.
Great. I appreciate the input from Planning Commission, Mr. Cam, and you as well, from the committee perspective. Appreciate the thoughts from council. This is a, this is a tough one, and this is, this really does shape the community for decades to come, and we want to get it right. So we're going to take our time and really analyze it fully. I think we've got good people on it, and lots of great thoughts from, from everybody tonight. So with that, we are adjourned.